And so the Select Board will be meeting here prior to town meeting for the next however long this lasts. We have a full agenda tonight and as is our practice with pre-town meeting, Select Board meetings, we do not do public comment now, so we'll go right to our six o'clock item, which is consideration of approval of the Housing Production Plan. Now we have some folks from the Housing and Sheltering Committee here to talk to us about that. So you guys are fine where you are. These are ambient mics here. Yes, so you can just introduce yourself for folks at home and ask us about the points.
I'm Judge Steve Spree, Associate Attorney of the Housing and Sheltering Committee. I'm John Horne, another member of the committee. For the last year since the committee's forum on the main tasks we've been working on is providing input to consultants who can develop the town's housing production plan. The plan was completed last month and at this point we have the plan approved by the Planning Board last week, and now we're seeking the Select Board's approval before the plan is sent to the state for adoption. So the state has two levels of adoption of the plan. First, approve the plan, which shows what the plan is going to look for in the statute. And the second is to certify the plan. And certification implies that the town has met its goal of producing affordable housing, that is. When we talk about affordable housing, we're talking about a housing that is affordable, those making up to eighty percent of their yearly income, your spender no more than thirty percent of their income on their housing. And the goal is to produce up to, to produce half percent of the town's year-round housing stock for affordable housing, which in Amherst's case works out to forty-eight percent per year. So the plan, which was completed last month, shows how the town has achieved that, and I believe the board received in an email a copy of a longer presentation, which was conducted by the consultants themselves. So we're going to be using that as an outline today. We're not going to visit all the blood points in that plan. We will go over it, and the board can come back to us with questions on specific points. So we've already defined affordable housing under the federal and state guidelines, so now we'll talk a little bit about why the town chose to conduct this study, produce this plan. In getting a certified plan from the state, the town has granted greater control over how affordable housing is produced in the town. So fully B developer who came to the town and proposed his housing, zoning board appealed to have greater leverage in dealing with that developer, and the developer did not have a recourse of appeal or could have turned down by the zoning board. That's just one of the reasons the town decided to take on this plan. Additionally, the town has sought for a long time to have data that shows more accurately the picture of housing in town and provides the town housing to address various issues which the town faces. So one of the goals, the overriding goal for the Town and Master Plan is to provide a mix of housing that meets the physical needs of and is affordable to the broadest possible spectrum of the working area, and will have an impact on the environment. And that is also one of the overriding goals of the Housing Production Plan. So when we look at what housing is currently affordable in Amherst, of the nine thousand six hundred and twenty-one year-round housing units, one thousand and thirty-five units for ten point seven-six percent are currently taken from the state's subsidized housing inventory. And if it takes the next point, which the town is near a critical threshold, where if the town falls below ten percent of its housing being in subsidized housing inventory, the town would be subject to a fully B development, being able to propose developments without the town's chance to summarily block those proposals, as they would if the Housing Production Plan is certified. So some examples of people in Amherst who might need affordable housing include children who grew up in Amherst, and families that live locally, cashier in the local grocery store earning really more than their own wage, school staff, labor workers, and spouse who's a volunteer or is a mass, with combined earnings of less than fifty-five thousand dollars on two children. And then one of the really key findings of the Housing Production Plan, the data portion of the plan, was that over the last decade, Amherst has lost about forty percent of its population, made it twenty-six to forty-five. And so some of the strategies of the Housing Production Plan outlines address that loss in operation. Let me turn to John.
Okay. Let me just come back to the point that Greg just made, because it's really very important. The plan shows that there's been a growth in the town population that's significant. Most of that growth is due to added students principally at the university, but housing has not grown over that period very much. So housing has not kept up with the demand. A lot of the demand is created by students. But because of that demand, the demography of the town has changed. Some of that may be to do with general population trends, but the fact that that twenty-six to, or twenty-five to forty-four population has been reduced, that the school population has been reduced, is a result of young families no longer being able to afford housing in Amherst. So when we think about the student problem, we tend to think about behavior problems, and that certainly is one dimension. But there's a second important question that people aren't focused on, which is that students are taking over a lot of the town housing, even if they never are nuisance in a neighborhood. The fact is that that housing is not available to young families, and that means, as I said, the demography of the town is changing. We don't have the kind of mixed population that we've had historically, and I don't think that's where the town wants to be. So that is among the most important findings. So when we look at priority housing needs, which is on page twelve with a handout, we need more rental housing for families. We also need more rental housing for students, because if we don't provide more rental housing --
--
--------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------
And so the consultants outlined a number of strategies that the town could pursue to those very goals that the committee just outlined. And one of the committee's main pieces of input on the plan was to really hone those strategies down, because we were given a very comprehensive menu of options, which could be pursued over decades, but we really wanted to narrow it down to those that were pursuable in the near future. So mechanically, ongoing strategies, these are strategies that the town has already undertaken and should continue to undertake, of which with them don't count any specific number of housing units per year. We asked for strategies such as to conduct community education related to affordable housing, to continue to pursue town down partnerships, especially with the mass, to ensure effective enforcement of zoning bylaws and town regulations. And then on top of such ongoing strategies, the committee really made a point to focus on strategies that we could pursue in the next one to five years. I should point out that the Housing Production Plan is a plan for production over five years, so these strategies are assigned certain years. In the categories of strategies to be pursued, in years one and two, we have to establish and capitalize a municipal affordable housing trust fund, to modify the inclusionary zoning and supplemental apartment bylaws, to continue to rezone village centers, easing restrictions on infill developments, and to continue to make suitable public property available for affordable housing. Those are strategies for years one and two. For years three through five, we have to monitor and maintain subsidized housing in the four units and to fund the housing rehab efforts. And our committee has already begun to implement some of these in the form of restructuring subcommittees that will be working groups to pursue in particular the strategies of establishing a municipal affordable housing trust fund and modifying the inclusionary zoning bylaw. And as far as the next steps with the plan, really, the Select Board is our next step, because it is one of the last pieces of approval we need before sending the plan off to the state. And to give a sense of the timeframe and the urgency for this approval, there's a number of affordable housing products, projects in the pipeline right now, most significantly Olympia Oaks. And if the town adopts this plan in time, we can conceivably count those units toward this year's goal and therefore receive certification of the plan. So with that, we don't present any questions before we head out of this.
Thank you very much. That was a very comprehensive review and much appreciated. I will point out for folks who are paying attention at home, that these documents are in the Select Board's web packet. The PowerPoint presentation is in this week's packet. The whole big written report is in last week's packet, so folks should take a look at that. It's really, it's tremendous information. It's very timely. It's exactly what we need now, and thank you very much for that. Select Board, questions or comments? Ms. Brewer?
I just want to make a couple of quick comments as liaison to this committee. One, I'm really appreciative that three of the six members could come tonight. Thank you also, Erin, for being able to be here. This is a very dedicated hardworking group. They've been in existence really for less than a year. They had a seventh member who has since had to leave us, and they, as Greg mentioned, they are restructuring their subcommittees to actually look at the work they're planning to do, which might seem somewhat self-evident, but isn't always in committee structure. So they're really trying to get things moving along and get things accomplished. And I know that one of the things they did along with the study, too, is they helped the consultant explain some of the findings in ways that we as a community could really relate to based on the way our master plan was written and other strategies that we've talked about. So it isn't just like we gave her money and she said, "Here," and they said, "Okay." There was a lot of interaction as to how the information might be presented. I know John worked on different charts, et cetera, with her. One of the things that I'm looking forward to hearing from the Housing and Sheltering Committee in the near future is since there's currently another housing study underway, a market study, what they think that community education might look like moving forward, because we'll have these two big studies that people in town meet and people throughout town have been really excited about. Ooh, we're going to get some meat in this housing situation. And then how do you, you know, what's the, what's the graph to get people involved in that rather than necessarily a particular town meeting article, although that's obviously coming up as well, but how that might work, so.
And I'll just note that these studies are related. They were put out to the same consultants as part of the RFP. I don't want anybody to think we've got competing housing studies going on.
No.
They're kind of, they're kind of parts of a whole.
Yeah.
Any comment on what you're expecting from that part or the timeline for that or anything like that?
What we're expecting from the additional study?
Yeah.
Well, our involvement, that study is similar to our involvement with the Housing Production Plans, so I believe we're meeting with the consultants conducting that study in late May, early June. We're going to be co-hosting one of those or more of those meetings with the Planning Board, get the Planning Boards involved, because of course all the public meetings, there will likely be a public forum involved. So we'll keep everyone posted on progress with that. And it's great to have the additional data. Like you said, they're complementary. They're not competing studies. And although it's great to have more studies in the pipeline, I think there's yet another one that's been proposed. The town can continue to act now and need not wait on additional data, because the Housing Production Plan has provided much of that already.
Thank you. That's an excellent point. Other questions or comments for folks in this committee?
Just very briefly, I, I've got through the short presentation and most of the bigger study. And it's great. Well, it's, it's thick.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a lot going on in here, and, and I really appreciate sort of how it pulls together the trends and everything else, but really what I wanted to say is that it's very elucidating on that part of the market that it really deals with. And it does help understand sort of what the heck is going on. But I do want to say that I'm looking forward to the second half of it, because that deals with the other part of the same issue that the unsubsidized, the not low income. There's a, there's a middle section in your graph here in families and professionals and everything else, and that's got to be fleshed out a little bit, too, because they live here, too.
Other questions or comments from the Select Board? Mr. Wall?
In the same vein as the Congressman, Ms. Brewer and Mr. Hayden, who have been doing my reading, you know, again, it's a wonderful plan. It's very clearly presented both here and tonight, so very grateful. I really hope that town meeting members will take it to heart, too, because we've been trying to do these things. And, you know, we go in circles debating, do we have enough housing or is it the right kind of housing? I think the message coming out of these documents is pretty clear. We don't have enough, and we know what kinds we need, and we know where part of the problem comes from. And so among the measures here that we're talking about, inclusionary zoning, supplemental apartment bylaws, rezoning of village centers, easing restrictions on infill, I think the message there is pretty clear, and I hope it'll help to focus the discussion we're about to have in the next few weeks or whenever we finish.
Thank you very much. Ms. Stein?
I really appreciate the data that was in here. I just find that I respond to that kind of information. I had no idea that certain of the properties in town were not permanently affordable. That was a surprise. I knew of some, but there are a few up there I didn't know about. So it really did bring a lot of data in a very meaningful way to us. I appreciate that a lot. Hard work, but thank you.
Other questions or comments? I would just again appreciate the much larger context that you've given us for kind of decision-making and considerations of the kinds of issues that come before us, come before the Planning Board, come before the Zoning Board of Appeals, come before town meeting all the time. It really kind of suggests a cause and effect relationship over a long period of time that kind of makes us say, oh, okay, so here we are, you know? And, and I think that that's incredibly valuable. I know that this report was extremely well-received at Planning Board last week. They are clearly in the thick of these issues also, and this is very valuable for all of us to have. So at this point, as you said in the beginning, and there's a cover memo in our packets about this, you need the Select Board to vote to approve this plan.
Adopt.
To adopt, thank you. Along with the Planning Board, which already did this last week, so that you can send it to the state so that we can get sort of --
There is our final step we should put, I believe, with the town manager, I think with that set it out, but yes.
Okay. You'll do that, right?
Please.
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Stein, would you like to make the motion?
Sir, I move that the Select Board adopt the Town of Amherst Housing Production Plan dated March 2013.
Second.
Is there further discussion? Oh, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that is unanimous. Thank you very much. Really looking forward to your report to town meeting tonight, and you've given us tremendous information. Thank you. Thank you for your great work on this committee. As Ms. Brewer noted, this is a new committee. This was, it was fairly contentious, our creation of this committee, and you're doing incredibly good work, so thank you. Much appreciated. Thank you. All right, so it is now six twenty-one. We've got a few more things we've got to deal with tonight. Let us start with the untimed items, so make sure we get those out of the way.
Parking?
Yeah. Community fair, and then cultural survival bazaar, and then we'll have Mr. Musanti speak to the Unitarian Universalist.
Sure. I move that the Select Board approve the closure of that section of Spring Street within the Spring Street parking lot from two P.M. Friday, May 24, 2013, to twelve A.M. Saturday, May 25, 2013, and again on Saturday, May 25, 2013, from one thirty P.M., following the closure of the Farmer's Market, to twelve A.M. Sunday, May 26, on behalf of the Rotary Club of Amherst for the Community Fair. Or it got left out.
Second.
Further discussion? Oh, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous.
Okay. I move that the Select Board approve the reservation of twenty-one metered parking spaces on the westerly side of Boltwood Avenue originating at College Street, moving north towards Spring Street, A.M., eight A.M. Monday, May 20, 2013, through twelve A.M. Sunday, May 26, 2013, and the three metered parking spaces on the easterly side of South Pleasant Street, south of the taxi stand, from eight A.M. to twelve A.M. on Thursday, May 23, 2013, Friday, May 24, 2013, and Saturday, May 26. Can't remember. It's got to be May 25th, isn't it?
Yeah.
As usually follows.
Twenty-fifth.
On behalf of the Rotary Club of Amherst for the Community Fair.
Second.
Further discussion? Oh, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous.
All right. I move that the Select Board approve the reservation of ten metered parking spaces on the west side of Boltwood Avenue originating at Spring Street intersection, moving south towards College Street for vendor use for the Cultural Survivals Eighth Annual Bazaar on the South Common, from five A.M. Friday, May 31, 2013, through nine P.M. Sunday, June 2, 2013.
Second.
Further discussion? Oh, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. So then the next one is the Unitarian Universalist Society of America, instead of Amherst, America. Whoa, we're getting big here.
It's an aspirational group.
That's right. So this was a, right, this was a request that was coming to us, but there have been new discussions about this, and Mr. Musanti's going to --
Yeah, I've got some really good news. There's no action needed tonight by the Select Board. Had an excellent meeting with the Amherst Downtown Business Improvement District and brainstormed some options that would be alternatives to meet the needs of the construction work at the Unitarian Church, but not necess, but not require the reservation of up to six public parking spaces throughout the period of construction. And it was a good discussion, and a property owner in the downtown, Andy Jones, has some private parking spaces available for lease a little further up Kellogg Avenue. Had some follow-up discussions with representatives of Wright Builders, who are the contractor for this project, and they are very receptive to pursuing a, an arrangement with Andy Jones to reserve the private spaces, which precludes the need for the use of public spaces. So those public spaces on North Pleasant and in the Boltwood parking lot will remain available for the public's use during the construction. So there's a private solution to this need, and happy to report that.
Thank you very much. Thank you for taking this to the bid for them to discuss and make a recommendation on. I think this is a really good solution. This is going to be a six-month or more construction period, so to not have all of that construction parking taking up the public parking downtown during that period is huge. So that's an excellent development. Thank you very much. Questions or comments about that from Mr. Musanti? All right, Ms. Stein, how about special licenses?
Sure. I move that the Select Board approve a special wine and malt license on behalf of Top of the Campus Incorporated for a reception slash brunch to be held May 11, 2013, from ten thirty A.M. to two P.M. in the Herter Art Gallery on the UMass Amherst campus. Judy Bartwell clerk.
Second.
Further discussion? Oh, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous.
It's okay. I'm sorry, I'm confused. Did we do the Cultural Survival parking?
Yes.
We did.
Okay, because I remember the two from Rotary, but that's wrong.
Did we?
I don't remember.
Yes, we did.
We did two.
Yeah, we did.
We did do three.
I think it was.
Yes, we did.
Twenty-eight wording, yeah.
Okay. I'm sure it was a great idea.
Yeah, okay.
I remember this because they asked for bags and we gave them spots. That was.
I'm sorry, I'm confused. I'm sorry. Did, perhaps we did this before I got here, because I, we did not just have a discussion about this.
Would you like me to replay my --
Yeah, well, exactly.
Because I remember, I remember being struck by the wording when it said the vendor's use for the Cultural Survivals Eighth Annual Bazaar.
Right, okay. So I remember you mentioning that.
And I was checking the date, because I have a previous one.
Right, so clearly I didn't know, but I'm sure it's a great idea. The, and I'm very sorry for the confusion here, trying to keep track of these different things, but I thought we were still talking about the errors in the, in the Community Fairs motion, which also had the wrong days of the --
Thanks, sorry.
Anyway.
This one didn't, but I was checking.
My concern is, following up on the conversation we had about the last big event on the Common that wasn't the Community Fair, is because we haven't had time to put into the application for the Common stronger wording associated with parking on the Common. I do not want, especially because this is a more international festival, people to feel that they're treated differently than people were treated who might have shown up at the Extravaganza and saw the vehicles all over the Common. And so I would just like that when this is shared, when the approval is shared with the Cultural Bazaar organizers, that it's made clear, I don't know if we normally give them a written decision on parking, I doubt it. I know we do on the Common, but I'm assuming we don't on the parking, that says, contrary to what you might have noticed just a couple of weeks ago, we are happy to let you drive a few limited vehicles on and off the Common and drop off and pick up, but do not do it because we will enforce. What I'm saying is we can't just let the last time continue on because people saw it happen, and they might very fairly assume that it's okay now, so, and it's not.
Mr. Musanti?
Yeah, there'll be a gentle reminder to the applicant of what the do's and don'ts are.
That would be great.
Yep.
All right, so we're still on special licenses. Let me just mention before you do this one that, yes, true enough, the date was May 1st, which was the other day. This is one of those licenses that just sort of slipped through the cracks of our approval process. It was actually received in time and everything. It just, things are a little shorthanded in the Select Board office right now, so this didn't happen. Mr. Musanti and I talked about it and decided that this is something that the Select Board would have approved had it come before us last week, and so we pre-approved it so that we could make it official this week, and I hope you don't mind terribly that we did that. So, Ms. Stein?
I move that the Select Board approve a special wine and malt license on behalf of Portobello Fine Foods for a chamber event on May 1, 2013, from five P.M. to seven P.M. at the Eric Carl Museum, Amherst. Christine Ellison, contact.
Second.
Further discussion? Mr. Hayden?
Do we know that it went well and we should approve it?
Yes, we're very approvable in record of that test. Further discussion? Oh, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that is unanimous. All right. All the things to talk about before we get to town meeting.
They all burned my out.
Oh, yes, okay. So we have received, this is not in our, this is not in our agenda, so probably not reasonably anticipated. So there is this process. We've been dealing with this Atkins stuff, well, forever, obviously, and, and we dealt with it a couple of meetings ago. We had to, there are all these verbs, specific verbs, that are involved in every, every step. I think the last meeting was our intent to lay out something. Then the Planning Board had to approve our intention or something like that. Then the planning board had to approve our intention or something like that, and now the Select Board has to adopt the layout. This is also something we've talked about in relation to town meeting warrant articles tonight. It turns out that it's our vote tonight, this adoption vote, that then starts a clock whereby after adopted, the plans for the altered layout need to be on file with the town clerk's office for eight days prior to the town meeting vote. So the town meeting vote needs to be postponed until next Wednesday, and we need to vote on this now so that we can start that eight-day clock. So that's information about what we're doing, and it's information about a procedural motion that I'll make tonight to explain to the body about why we're putting out those articles. So are there questions or comments about that? Ms. Stein?
So it's the one on this motion sheet, right?
Yes.
Okay. I move at the Select Board pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 82, Sections 21 to 24, having deemed that common convenience and necessity require the alteration of the layouts as public ways of portions of Bay Road, West Bay Road, and West Street. Hereby alters the layouts of said roadways as public ways as shown on the plan referenced below, and the boundaries of Bay Road, West Bay Road, and West Street as public ways are hereby altered to include within said layouts the parcels of land shown on a plan of land entitled, quote, "Plan of Land in the Town of Amherst, Hampshire County, Bay Road, West Bay Road, and West Street, Altered and Laid Out by the Town of Amherst," end quote, dated December 2011.
Second.
Further discussion? Oh, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, the other thing that we have to do is note that we have received from the regional schools notice of the fact that they intend to borrow. And so we just got this from them the other day. There's no action required from us except the announcement that we have received that notice, and I have to sign something saying that we received notice, so duly announced and noticed. Questions or comments about that? Ms. Brewer?
For future reference, it would have been interesting perhaps to know why one person on the school committee voted against it, which is what it indicates in the cover memo, but given that it was a clear majority vote, I'm not concerned.
Okay. Mr. Musanti, do you know anything about this?
Not about the particulars of that member's concern, but the regional school district planning on capital needs and borrowing are factored into the multi-year capital planning that the town does. And so I know the superintendent and staff have worked with Sandy and I in terms of the timing of both the amounts and the timing of the borrowing, so that as older debt is retired, they're replacing it with new, new debt for newer projects. So it works within the overall capital budget.
All right, duly noted. I think those are all the specific things that we have motions on and need to take specific actions on. I want to note for the Select Board's information, a couple of things that will happen at town meeting from a procedural perspective. Tonight, I will recommend or ask the body to approve moving Article 26, which is the town gown planning article, to 7:05 on the 15th. That is when the chancellor is available to come and speak to town meeting. I will move to consider Article 29 rental regulations on Monday, the 20th, and that was the date agreed on by the Safe and Healthy Neighborhoods Working Group that met last week to talk about this. The petitioners will then move consideration of Article 38, their article, for the 22nd, and they will speak to that. So that you know, I've had very good discussions with that neighborhood group. They're all enthusiastically supporting Article 29 and basically are hoping to dismiss Article 38. So that's just kind of the bottom line with that. They're going to have a handout. I'm not sure if it'll be tonight or at the next town meeting about their position on that. And then the other thing is, oh, Articles 10 and 11, is that what it is? About the Atkins layout, the easements, that we can't consider those tonight and that we would consider those on the 15th, which is after that eight-days requirement has been met, and we would do that after Article 26.
Yes.
That is all I know about right now. Does anybody have any other town meeting-related issues we should talk about? Ms. Brewer?
Is the petition article associated with human services being moved up? Do we know that for sure or are we taking it in the matter?
I can't remember what's happening with that Article 45. Is the finance committee is moving that up?
We had some discussion of Select Board perhaps offering a motion the night Article 25 is about to be considered, to consider 45 immediately following.
Okay, so whenever it comes up, okay.
Right.
All right, so it won't be tonight. So what?
The draft script has that.
It does.
I don't know.
Do you know if the petitioners have been contacted about that?
I believe so.
Okay, so we will, we'll follow up on that.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's see. Anything else logistics-wise folks can think of related to?
We're not going to meet on Wednesday, I hope.
That's correct. We have nothing on our agenda for Wednesday. On next Monday, we will, next Monday is the 13th, is when we expect to take up Article 42. Is that the number again?
Yes.
The Echo Village article, after Housing and Sheltering Committee will have met on Wednesday, and Mr. Musanti and Mr. Zomack are having continuing conversations with folks about what comes next with that, so we will have more information for that next Monday. That is the plan. Ms. Brewer?
Will the Housing and Sheltering Committee have in hand a memo indicating what town meeting, the town meeting votes and the affirmative on either of those two articles that go hill or what it actually compels us to do, the conversation?
Right.
Yes, yeah, yeah. We'll have that in place for Wednesday.
So they'll have that for their discussion on Wednesday?
Yeah.
Good, thank you.
Okay, so that's next week. So we don't need to meet Wednesday. The plan is, as we have done in the past, at the end, when we finish whatever article we finish tonight, as the Select Board has endorsed previously, I'm going to move to consider the next article, and the moderator will ask the body if they want to, if anybody wants to speak for or against considering the next article, and that if they don't, then I will then make the adjournment motion. And so I think that's everything. So we're about to start a 45 article warrant. This is the beginning of a new moderator, and this is going to be a very interesting and important annual town meeting, so get ready. And without objection, this meeting adjourns at 6:38. Select Board will meet again next Monday, the 13th. Right here, thank you.